Okay, Patrick, you ready?
I think we're good.
Okay, welcome to Troy Planning Commission meeting for March 24th. Please call the roll.
Mayor.
You're muted, Robin.
Or not.
Robin, I see you. We can't hear you.
Call the music on.
The screen slipped. I was trying to pull up the minutes and I lost the screen, so.
Yeah, don't do that.
Okay, roll call, mayor.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Wilkie.
Here.
This is early.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mr. Cappers.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we have our minutes disseminated to us. The meeting in March 10. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions of those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, they stand. Okay, next we have the historic disco application for the demolition of 112 118 West Main Street. I understand the applicant has still requested that to remain on the table this week. If at any time the planning commission wants to take it off the table to discuss it, you're well, you're welcome to do so. But unless there's a motion to remove it from the table, it will stay on the table. Okay, hearing none, it will stay on the table again. Next, we have the historic disco application for 126 South Cherry Street for a certificate of appropriateness regarding the placement of a gazebo, bench, table, and fencing. Do staff have a report?
Yes, we do. The former location on 126 South Cherry Street, which is now, of course, cleared vacant as of last June, is owned by the First United Methodist Church. They have requested the installation of a wooden gazebo, a aluminum bench, a picnic table, and a 48-inch-high black aluminum fence. And on the site plan, it was attached the application that indicates those locations, including the fence, which would be the southwest corner of the property. Just to note also that the lot has undergone a replat and it's currently getting signatures, so should planning commission approve this, staff will issue it out after the replats recorded. All the installation items do conform to the fence and zoning codes. We don't see, staff doesn't see any impact to historic integrity. The purpose here is to use it as a passive space, more or less, for a prayer garden, according to the application. And so staff does recommend approval.
Questions of staff? I got a couple. The original demolition petition contained a reuse plan. What was that reuse plan at the time of the demolition?
It was green space.
Okay, so now they're submitting a different reuse plan because it's no longer just going to be green space. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We've got to be very careful because of the other demolition request that's out there, entertaining a reuse plan subsequently that might be different than what was originally presented. The next question I have is the distances that are set forth in the application. The gazebo, for instance, says it's going to be located five feet from the south property line. Well, the fence is already going to be located two feet from the south property line, so that only gives a three-feet width. Our sidewalks in the subdivision regulations are at least five feet. Was it intention of the applicant to be five feet away from the fence? Or just three feet away from the fence?
Well, as they indicated, it would be three-feet difference. You'd be correct.
But that's legal per zoning code, right?
I'm sorry, what was the comment?
I'm sorry, I was just asking that is if that was legal per hour zoning and fence codes. Staff said, yes, it is.
Any other questions of staff? Did they give you any reason why the gazebo and the bench were so snug into the corners of this lot? It seems to me like there's a large area in the middle that's not being used, and why not?
They didn't provide that in the application. The applicant is is on the list, I guess you could say.
Okay.
Mr. Cappers, my name is Penny Hookstra. I represent the church.
Could you?
And.
For me, please.
I would tell you that, you know, since we're working on a piece of paper right now, that there's nothing to say that we couldn't move things a little more with a little more space between them once we actually see the physical gazebo. But the the inner part was going to be kind of more just green space with some shrubs and, you know, things like that, so we wanted to leave it rather open, so there would be that flow of green space in the middle.
I would think that if you put the gazebo right dead center, then there's not much else you can do with that piece of property. The gazebo gives, it sounds like, gives a place to sit, but still leaves part of the property to be used for something else.
Yes, for green space. There's also going to be the park bench to sit. People could take a blanket, put it down on the grass, have a picnic. We're very open to what its use could be by the community.
Are there any other particular uses that are planned for that property? And I'm thinking, are there going to be any tent services, revivals, outside services there on that property?
Not that's planned at this time.
Okay. It just seems like the gazebo and the park bench are awfully snug up against that fence. Is there any possibility moving them out a couple of feet?
Certainly. Are we allowed to move them once we get the items in place and see how it it best fits to be aesthetically pleasing?
Well, what I'd be looking at is approval of that change today, modifying the request for a certificate of appropriateness so that they're five feet away from the fence instead of five feet away from the property line.
We would be willing to make that change, yes.
Any other commission members have any questions with staff or the applicant?
Yes, I'm a little uncertain as to exactly what are we asked to approve?
Steph?
You're being asked to approve those three, four items that were noted in terms of their design, their physical space, aesthetics of them.
But does that include where they're located?
You know, yeah, includes the distance to the property line, which is the main part that our codes require, five-foot, a property line at a minimum. But also the location on a property of any structure is part of your review, yes.
No, just a question for staff.
Mr. McGary?
The bench in the, in the table, that's just a piece of furniture, right, that I mean, people can pick it up and move it to another spot on the grass? I take it? We're basically talking about the gazebo, moving that out five feet. Am I correct?
And the fence, yes.
Right.
Is the bench going to be permanently placed into the ground or just sitting on top? That's what Mr. McGary's question was.
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see any anchoring of the picnic table on concrete. If that's your question, maybe Penny can elaborate on there. They didn't submit that. So I would say that would be loose, the same with the bench. So yes, primarily the fence and the gazebo.
Any, is that true?
That would be correct. We're not going to put it, anchor it into concrete.
I, I think of the applicants wanting to move the gazebo, that the five feet like was being asked, I would make a motion to approve as presented. It seems to be a good use of the lot. It's green, mostly green space.
Let me construe your motion as presented with the amendment that it'd be five feet away from the fence. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes. I'll second that.
Your support for that motion? Any further discussion?
And that, I assume that's contingent on final recording?
Yes, we are within the 30 days right now from when Mayor Oda signed that. And we're just waiting for that 30 days to be, to come, to be, you know, finished. I think it's April 9.
Okay, so did you get the motion okay?
Yes, I did.
Okay, any further discussion? Just call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie.
Yeah.
This is early.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mayor.
Robin?
Mayor Oda.
Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a historic disco application for 4 West Main Street for the refacing of a wall sign. Do staff have a report?
We do. Applicant Karen Boone has submitted a proposed sign for the wall side of the building as well as the front door window sign. Previously launched at 4 West Main LLC to change its name to Pop-Up Events. LLC, after going through a rebrand during the pandemic, pandemic period. So this is the reface of those two signs. There's a change obviously in the name as well as some of the colors. The reface sign has gray, yellow, and white in it. And it does conform to our sign code, and it does not change the historic integrity of the building. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions of staff?
I guess, I'm wondering if there was some copying problem because on the recommendation, you've said the proposed sign will not detract from the historic integrity of the building, comma, and, and that's where it ends.
Yep, sorry about that, typo.
What's the typo?
The and is should not be there.
Okay. Mr. Wilkie, are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Should we want to take any action on this matter?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and support for the motion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
This is early?
Yeah.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation by Troy Main Street of a proposed mural program in the downtown area. Who wants to lead this? Mr. Titterington, perhaps, or?
Well, yeah, Andrea's on the call or on the Zoom. Andrea, I was going to share the screen so that everybody can see the various pictures if you want to talk about each location.
Sure, that'd be great. I'll just kind of give a general overview of our process and what we're thinking. My name's Andrea Keller. I'm the executive director with Troy Main Street. And our, we have a committee that's focused on design and the aesthetics of the downtown. It's one of, design is one of the four points of Main Street. And so we have been exploring the idea of getting some more murals in our downtown. And we wanted to come to the planning commission today and just request permission and moving forward with the mural program that we're trying to establish. And we're just looking for kind of a start to this program. So we've, we've done some of the groundwork. We've done some research. We're really excited about murals and their ability to add to the vibrancy of our downtown, to highlight certain areas of our downtown that maybe don't get highlighted as often. We think there's something that will increase the foot traffic, which is always good for our businesses. One, one thing that we've talked about is putting some murals in some areas that are a little bit more hidden so that people maybe see a picture posted on, on social media and say, hey, where is that? I want to find it. And so that we encourage people to come downtown. It's something that we think will be beneficial to both visitors and to local citizens. It's something that we think we can use as an educational tool if we wanted to do a mural that, that represented some, some piece of history, some piece of Troy history or something like that. And then, again, just to increase as well as foot traffic, social media traffic has been something that our businesses have relied on a lot this year. And they've really given us that feedback that for them, social media has been very important this year. And social murals are a great way to get some social media traffic. Especially, we've talked about doing some sort of selfie wall where people come and it's clear that it's in Troy. So the other thing that we've talked about is some of our buildings have ghost murals, which are old, basically the ghost of an old mural. So some advertisements maybe that were posted on a building, painted on a building at one time. There's a technique that, that some muralists do to kind of bring those back and make them still look old, but, but repaint them. So, so it's something that we're really excited about. We did not want to move forward with soliciting artists and funding for this unless we knew that the general idea of murals was something that planning commission was open to in our historic district. We know that, you know, there are a few different murals downtown. But we just wanted planning commission's feedback if this is something that you all would be willing to approve in the future. Again, we would obviously come to you every time that we were going to do a specific mural and, and get approval for that specific mural. But before we start to explore the specifics and work with artists and businesses or building owners, we just wanted to propose this to planning commission. And yeah, so the packet that you've all got that, that Patrick's pulled up, we've identified different locations that we thought would be good for a mural. And then we've talked to the building owners and we've gotten different responses. The Davies own several buildings in downtown and said that they would be open to the general idea, kind of depending on which building it is and, and how the cost works. We are trying to explore some opportunities for some grants right now for this. We did have a few building owners who said they may even be willing to, to pay for one on their, on their building. But, so this was one area that's on the screen right now that we thought may be in between the, the window and the door, maybe a good little location for a selfie mural where people come and take a picture. This is on the 405 building downtown. If you want to scroll down.
So Andrea.
Yeah.
A little bit more specifically, though, I think you can see the hand, my cursor hand here. Are you talking about this area right in?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. And the next building is where Pacha Mama's located. This building's owned by Wade Westfall.
Could I interrupt you just a minute? Would it be more appropriate for us to comment on each one before we move to the next slide? That way we don't have to flip back and forth.
That's fine. I don't, I don't know if we need like approval for each building yet. We're, we're looking for more of a general approval of the program. And then with each specific building, we would come to you with like, here's the building, here's an idea for a mural and, and propose that.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay. You're fine. So this, this building is owned by Wade Westfall. It's, as you come into, to town on South Market Street, we think that would be a great location for a mural because it's a big wall and something that could welcome people to downtown. This next building is one that is also owned by the Davies. Again, I'm not sure if they would be open to a mural on this wall because it, because of it being brick and not being painted over yet. There may be some, some questions about that, but that one looks like it may have a ghost mural on it too, so that might be an option. And then this is just the other side of that building, and that's where Echo Beach is located.
And are you talking about like right here?
Um, you know, on this building, I, I don't, I, I think we were meaning more the brick, but then I hadn't thought about that painting on brick is probably not. Yeah, the best.
Let me have you do this. I'm sorry, as we go through, if any of the commission members have any comments,
Yeah.
maybe we ought to talk to about them while, while the picture's up.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
I'll start things off. The, the top picture there is being shown. I know that that's a ghost mural. It looks more like it, the parking lot used to be another building that was torn down and that was the inside.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And that this, and I'd be okay with a mural on that building with the proviso. And, and this is, this is the tough part, Andrea. And I know that your letter to us said you are want, want to promote the growth of our historic downtown, and these will become, be forced before, for historic district application. So we got to take a look at, is the mural that you're planning is some sort of historic benefit to the downtown? Or do we just ignoring that entirely? And I know we've got a number of murals downtown already, one on the rec, which denotes maybe back when the Miami River Canal was in place. Then we've got a B on the side of a building, and we have a more of an Art Deco type of thing on the side of the Mayflower Theater. So I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we want to, I would think, stay away from any contemporary or modern murals and kind of depends upon what the size of the mural is. For instance, in that first phrase, you, you showed, talked about a selfie mural. And, and I don't know what exactly you're talking about as far as a selfie.
Yeah. I can explain that a little bit better. So, for example, in Dayton, they have a mural that says, it's, it's like a frame, basically. It's very simple. And it says Dayton Inspires at the top, and it's right at a place where you can stand in front of it and take a picture.
I see, okay.
So.
So it's not going to be like a clown with a face that you enter, put your face through and you end?
No. But those have become very, very popular in cities because they're kind of a landmark and people want to go and take their picture there.
The, the second picture there, the Wade Westfall building, that's kind of a blank slate, and I think that a mural would look nice there.
Yeah.
And I'd be all in favor of that, but what are you going to do about, once these get up, who's going to maintain them? Tell me about the maintenance of these things.
Um, you know what? That's a good question. Well, I, I don't know. We'll have to look into that. We haven't, we haven't really researched that yet, but I will, I will look into that and get back.
Because the worst thing to do for downtown, I think, one of the worst things is to have some sort of artwork that is left being maintained.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That might fall into, that will probably fall into some of the funding to how, how we're going to do that. Yeah, thank you for saying that.
Okay, if nobody else is going to talk, I'll keep talking.
Yeah, this is Ed. I love the idea. I think it's, it's wonderful and it would add some color. I mean, we have some good color downtown already, but I think the historic part, the, the one thing I thought is, if you pick a building, to me, maybe you bring two or three ideas of murals, since some people can get, you know, I, I might be able to get stuck on one that I don't like and maybe having a couple of backups, so you don't have to come back so many times. And I've seen the selfies where they have wings of different, you know, where people take those selfies. I think it's a great idea. And it sounds like obviously we're going to have control of what comes before the planning commission, but I, I think it's great.
Andrea, you're kind of looking for some advisory things. The picture that's up now, the one on bottom. When I take a look at that building, I take a look at that building and say, boy, those, those limestone bars that are across there, boy, isn't that a nice attractive feature of the building? And I would, I would personally hate to, to mark that facade up with
Yeah.
mural unless it's really, really attractive for some reason.
Right, yeah. Somebody mentioned that. And that was something that I, you know, started to think about is that maybe it's better to stick. So we just kind of went through the downtown and snapped pictures of different places that, that stood out to us at first, but the more we've talked about it, some people have mentioned that it would be good to focus on like walls that are already painted. So that's, yeah, that's good feedback.
Anybody else have any comments?
Uh, this is Sandy. Once I understood that we would ultimately have approval of each mural, I think it's a great idea. It's very progressive. It's done in a lot of towns. It, it can demonstrate a lot of things about that city that is unique. Some cities have tried to pull in their diversity through the murals and the artists, and I think it's a great idea as long as we have approval of each one before it is put up there. I think it's a great idea.
And Andrea, you acknowledge that also, that we're going to be looking at these on a case-by-case.
Yeah. Yeah, we would bring them to you all individually. And, and that's kind of what we got to a point of like, okay, we've identified some areas that we think would be good, but we want to take it to planning commission and make sure that the, the general idea is something that, that's, that planning commission is okay with. And then we would bring a specific mural and a, a building together. And obviously, we would include the building owner. Obviously, we'd have to in the, in all that entire process so that they get, say, and, and what's, what's going on in their building, or if there's something of the history of their building that maybe they want to represent in that mural.
Go ahead. Patrick, go ahead and keep scrolling.
So this is the wall behind David Fair's building. It has been primed, I believe, for a mural. And so that is definitely a potential location. He is open to that. This is another, the, the next few pictures are all of the back of his building. We had it from several different angles to just trying to make sure everybody knew where, where we were on these, so. This is at Heron's Market, obviously, that just in this word, we were talking about this little panel between the windows, which I don't know if that's, I, I'm not sure what that material is. Connor had said like he wouldn't want, obviously, painting on his brick, but this was a kind of different location that we had pointed out that may be, may be fun to explore. And then.
Go ahead, Patrick.
The next building, this is the side of the Trojan City Music Building. They, they're very excited about potentially putting a mural here. And that's on East Main. This building, I have not heard back from the building owner yet, but this is the building that the police department where Carolina Moon and Pure Bread Coffee Co. are. Again, that's a brick wall that is painted white right now. So we talked about that as a potential location for a mural, and this is one of those that's kind of hidden. And so we, we've thought it would be a fun place for a mural because people would kind of have to go find, find that mural. You can keep.
I will say on this location, Mr. Cappers, that it is a very popular area for taking pictures amongst the millennial and younger crowd. We actually put some backless benches along that wall. And they, they take pictures all the time there.
That's just another angle of it so you can kind of see. So this is the ghost mural that's on the Beauty by Bellotti building. Geraldine Smith owns that building, and she was excited about potentially bringing that back to life. She said she has, she's, she, she said she thinks she has some old renderings or, or a postcard or something that would have what was actually there and on that building, so. The next building is Polish Nail Salon. Now, this is owned by Patty Rose, so we had asked her about it. She said she may be open to it, but it would depend on, she is neighbors with the Presbyterian Church, and so she, she wants to be a good neighbor. But this was just an, an, another area that we had identified as a potential central location. This is the back or the alleyway between Bakehouse Bread and Troy Sports Center. And so we had looked at kind of both of those walls. That alley has been talked about a lot as a place that could be beautified in some way. Again, I've seen people taking. Um, again, I've seen people taking pictures back here as well. Um, so.
And this area has some potential, uh, under the, I guess, you know, within the riverfront study, this would be one of those areas that, uh, if we could get the dumpsters relocated and work with monkey, uh, that it could potentially be kind of a, an alley. It, uh, cafe, if you will, or seasonal cafe with maybe some string lights between the, the, the two buildings. Um, and so it's, it's got a lot of potential, uh, as well, you know, in, in addition to, I guess, the, uh, mural.
Looks like there was a car parked back in there, Patrick. You might have to.
That's, uh.
Vacate the alley.
Well, that, that's the owner of Bakehouse and, uh, as a Troy, uh, Main Street board member, he acknowledges that he might have to find a different location.
Um, this is the, the side of the Insightful Eyewear Building, um, right beside Bakehouse. And we had identified that small wall again as maybe a potential location for a smaller mural. Yeah. Um, this is on the side of the, um, Troy Family Bike Shop, um, on Cherry Street. Um, this, this building is owned by Heather and Rob Davy. I'm not, again, this one being brick, I don't know if, if they'd be open to that or, um, if that might be a location we take out, um, but just a place that we identified as we were taking pictures. The next one is the, um, the Mayflower Building, the side of that. Um, Lisa is interested in a potential mural, um, as long as she would have some obviously input into that. She was excited about the potential for, for a mural.
And, uh, in what area, Andrea? This area back here or in the front?
Um, you know, I'm, I think, I was thinking in the front, but I'm not sure. She may be thinking the back. I haven't, I would have to ask more specifically.
For many, many years, that was overgrown with ivory on the side of the building. Has that been removed now? I can't remember.
It's still, it's still there, but it's dead, dying and, uh, it, that's why I've been asking, that might be motivation to get rid of that.
It might have damaged the brick too.
Uh, that's a possibility. Yeah.
Um, and then this is the Three Weird Sisters Building. So Beth says she, um, has a, a ghost mural. I can't remember which side it's on, but she, um, said, I think it's maybe been painted over. Um, but she is interested in either side of her building. That's kind of a higher, um, location. Um, and I can't remember which side the ghost mural is on, but, um, she is also very interested in potentially having a mural. I think that was, I think. Are, are there other questions or the feedback has been very helpful, some of the things to, to look for as we're moving forward with specifics. Um,
Mission members have any other comments or questions?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to point out what a good neighbor, um, to consider what the other people next to the building or who would be looking at it. I mean, it just might be something to consider if you're, if you're painting where, for example, where the Presbyterian Church will see that. Or with the Pacha Mama Building where, you know, that's a garden next to a church again. It'd be, it'd be nice to consider what the neighbors that are going to look at it also would think.
Yeah. And she was the, um, also, um, Geraldine from, who owns the Beauty by Bellotti Building. She mentioned that she was like, you know, I, I would be excited about that, but I would want to talk to, to Kay's because they're in the building next to me and you'd have to get on, on their roof. And so, um, that's, yeah. Everything to remember.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I, I can see in some of the locations where a nicely designed mural would be an improvement. But on the other hand, I've cut an aversion to painting a perfectly good bare brick wall.
Uh, I, I feel your pain there, Larry. Um, but as I said, I, I think what they were looking for is maybe some direction from us. And I think the direction of, unless I'm misreading things, is that the planning commission would, would entertain uh, favorably a mural based upon a review on a case by case basis. And, and if that's everybody's feeling, I think Andrea would have her marching orders as far as continuing her research. Everybody agree with that?
Well, basically, yes. Are, are we going to possibly run into a content problem?
Well, that's why we need to continue to keep the control on a case by case basis. Cause well, for instance, you don't want any, uh, obscene gestures or anything like that, particularly on the one facing the church. You know, things of that nature.
Or anywhere for that matter.
Oh my, your mind went there. Okay.
Wha- what if one might be interpreted by a certain segment of the population to be political?
Right. We will have to be careful and that's, and that's why every one of them needs, that's another reason why every one of them needs to come back to the planning commission. Um, Andrea and I have talked about some general guidelines. Uh, you know, no wording if, uh, if possible. Uh, positive messaging, uh, historic bent, if you will, uh, you know, so all those things. And, and of course you're, you're dealing with artists and each one will have their own interpretation. So that's why this is a two-step process.
Maybe more than two.
Well, yeah, multiple step process.
Any other comments from the commission?
The only recommendation that I would make is, I like the idea, but it would be helpful if Troy Main Street would, uh, engage uh, a professional, maybe an architect to, to review the processes that would be used for painting and sealing and removal of the, of the, uh, murals. I know historically in the past, there's been some buildings that were damaged with improper sand blasting improper use of paints that penetrated the mortar and that type of thing. And, um, I'm certainly not an expert in that area, but I know it's of concern because once it's up, it's very difficult to make the changes.
Yeah, that's, that's great feedback.
Okay, anything else? Andrea, did we touch all of your points?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the next matter, then we have, uh, uh, does staff have anything else to come before the commission today?
No, we don't.
Okay, I guess we have a, a notice that, uh, our next meeting will be April fourteenth. Beware the Ides of April coming up. So, uh, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, everyone.